I want, there we go. All right. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you coming to our board meeting tonight. I am not going to call a meeting to order until we have accomplished a roll call vote from our city clerk. So if you would, please have the board do a roll call.
Alderman Tischler.
Here.
Alderman Lewis.
Here.
Alderman Walker.
Here.
Alderman May.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Alderman.
Here.
All right. Thank you for being in attendance. We have a few who are phoning in. So if you would, please, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance, followed by invitation, which will be given to us by Alderman Vaughn in a moment of silence.
Our pledge of allegiance to this land, the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Vaughn.
Let us pray. Our God and our Father, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, one that rules and superrules, the God of creation, the giver of life, Father God, again, his future handmade service again, Father God, coming for you again. And Lord God, as you know, it's not for no shape, form, or fashion, nor has God shown to the world. The mayor, the board, department head, city employees, we're coming for you again, Father. Just thank you for what all you have done for us. And just thank you for the gift of life. Thank you for every breath that you allow us to take. Thank you for being clothed in our right mind with the activity of our Williams and the use of all our orders. Praying, Father God, that you will please forgive us of all our sins, that's known and unknown, seen and unseen. Now, Father God, we ask you that you would just please take our hearts, our hearts and put it in the cities of Gent, Father God, that all the decisions will come from our hearts. Lord, we just thank you so much for giving us this privilege to serve this city. We thank you so much, Father God, for the leadership that you lead in this city. And God, we give all praise and honor and glory to you because of who you are and what you are. And we thank you, Father God, going down to the last of this term. Thank you for what all you have allowed us to achieve, Father God, and all the things that, and progress now. We just thank you so much because we couldn't do anything without you. And Father God, we pray for all the projects that were for us now, Father God, that they will all be a success. And Lord, we just thank you so much for being our God and we your servants, and our Father and we your children. Father, we thank you so much for controlling our destiny, not leaving us in the hand of no man. And Lord, we pray for all our COVID-19 victims, Father God. We pray so much for all the deaths that are alive. We just pray that you can comfort all those families that in bereavement were announced, Father God. And we pray for all our world, and the city, the Christian, the citizen, the encountered, just God, that we will not lean and depend on our own understanding. We will look to you for modest wisdom and understanding, how to lead and guide your peoples. Father, we just pray for the inauguration, that all will be done safely. Father, we just thank you so much. We give praise and honor and glory to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. This is our January 19th, our list meeting for January, the last meeting of this month. And as a matter of order, just to make everybody understand, each vote we take this evening will be a roll call vote because we do not have everyone here in person. So it adds just a little bit of time, but it works very nicely. So the next item on the agenda will be approval of the official agenda with consented items. And I will start with Alderman Vaughn. Do you have any changes to the agenda or consented items, Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins, do you have any changes to either the agenda or the consented items?
No, ma'am, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Alderman Little?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Alderman Tischler.
No, ma'am.
Alderman Carver?
No, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. With that, I need a motion to approve the agenda with the consented items.
I have a proposal.
I have a motion from Alderman Carver. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second from Alderman Beatty. If you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Yea.
Alderman Tischler.
Yea.
Alderman Lewis.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman May.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman.
Yea.
All right. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. And now I will read the consented items. First, it's consideration of the minutes of the December 15th, 2020 meeting of the mayor and the board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Second is consideration of the minutes of the January 5th, 2021 meeting of the mayor and the board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Under board business, we have consideration to appoint Carol Smith Payton to fill one of the two vacancies we have in the Ohio County Heritage Museum Committee, a three-year period, January 2021 and January 2024. We have consideration to reappoint Mr. Russell Rogers to the municipal airport board for a three-year period, January 20th, 2021, and January, January 20th, 2024. We also have consideration to appoint Mary Love Taggart to the Golden Triangle Regional Solid Waste Management Authority for a four-year period beginning January 1, 2021, and expiring December 31st, 2024. Under finance administration, we have request acceptance of the December 2020 financial statements. Number three, we have request authorization for Jamika Smith to participate in the educational assistance program to take the master's level courses in accounting as budget allocations allow. Under the fire department, we have request permission to issue a commercial burn permit to Will Owens to burn cleared debris associated with a construction project located at Cornerstone Park. Number two is request authorization to purchase five portable radios, programs for use with MSWIN and MSU radio systems, five microphones, 10 batteries, and five extended warranties off state contract from TeleTech Communications of Columbus in the amount of $9,225. Number three is request authorization to purchase two Dell onboard laptops off state contract in the amount of $2,649 each. Number four is request authorization to purchase six complete sets of firefighter turnout gear off state contract from NESCO for the Starkville Fire Department in the amount of $16,698. Number five is request authorization to purchase various specialty couplings, hoses, onboard secure storage, et cetera, in the amount of $53,438.10 as a sole source items made only by Tactical Fire Equipment LLC. Under HR, human resources, number one, request authorization to hire Taylor Bragg as water distribution equipment operator in the Starkville Utilities Department. And I'm going to apologize before I even try to read number two. Request authorization to hire Raina Ismali as a radio operator dispatcher in the Starkville Police Department. And if I mispronounce that, I apologize, but that's the best I got. Number three, request authorization to hire Virginia Coleman and Asia Huganet as part-time customer service representatives in the Starkville Utilities Department. Number four, request authorization to hire Cameron Buckridge as an entry-level firefighter in the Starkville Fire Department. And number five, request authorization to hire Quinton Bane as a maintenance worker in the Starkville Utilities Department. Under parks, recommendation to designate Dalhousett Thomas Design Studios, Design Services, site plans, construction documents, and administrative documents required for the Starkville Sports Flex and McKee Park not to exceed 220,000. Number two is recommendation to approve the contract for usage of the concession stand area and storage room located at the Travis Outlaw Center for the Southern Foundation for Homeless Children, Inc., for a period of one year. Under police division, it's request approval to allow Officer Matthew Lasker to attend field officer training certification, February 8th through the 12th, 2021, located in Vicksburg, Mississippi, at a cost not to exceed $1,000. Next is request approval to purchase renewal from Power DMS to continuing annual software for policy procedure and training management with an annual fee of $5,246.08. And consideration to select Utility, Inc., as the best bid to provide mobile vehicle and body worn recording system in the amount of $621,600 with the city clerk to advertise for financing options. Under code enforcement is consideration of calling for a public hearing under Mississippi Code Annotated 211911 to determine whether the building located at 307 Apple Street with the parcel number 118P-00-116.00 is a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Next item is consideration of calling for a public hearing under Mississippi Code Annotated 211911 to determine whether the building located at 722 Vine Street with the parcel number 102H-00-17000 is a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Under utilities department, we have request authorization to purchase a T-64 T4 Bobcat compact truck loader for the wastewater treatment plant from state contract 8200036886 in the amount not to exceed $46,000. Number two, request authorization to advertise for proposals for an A6X4 tandem axle truck, 80-foot hydraulic derrick equipment only, as a replacement for the existing digger derrick truck number 46 that will be listed as a surplus and auction on GoDeals.com for the electric division. And that concludes the consent agenda for this agenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
My pleasure. Happy to do that. All right. And next we move to mayor's comments. And I've just got a couple of quick things I want to highlight. Yesterday was MLK Day. We normally have quite a celebration on MLK Day. It was obviously because of COVID, we were separated, but we did have some outstanding things happen. Things happened at Jail King Center. Starkville Strong participated in providing meals and food and other personal items to people who came by and picked those up. And then the Unity Park had their announcement of their two people this year who would be the, provide, would have gotten the awards as contributing to unity in the community. So I wanted to, wanted to say thank you for that and highlight that as well. All right. Anyone else? Alderman Carver, anything from you?
I don't, other than maybe a little unorthodox. One thing, on Friday, I had to leave teleconference from the work session early. And the parks, Dalhousett Thomas, Dan, how far we along in that process? And what was said as it is? Are you represented?
We're not along on the process at all. This is the opportunity for us to put them in place to do the sports flex and the key park. So what we've got is an original master plan associated with both those. But we haven't gone into the detail. And this is to allow us to get into that detail, fine tune those designs, or create those designs that we will then adopt.
Has there been any thought of what the design will be in the key park out of that, that time? Didn't have the answer, so.
Well, that's part of what there's.
Essentially, I mean, y'all got something in mind. I know we talked at one point about all census being done, you know, park fill, you know.
Well, I think there are a number of things that are being talked about. A dog park is one, and walking tracks the other. It's currently got basketball courts and tennis courts, which should remain, new pavilions, new bathrooms, some water feature. It is, again, yet to be determined and how they're going to be laid out. It is one of the things that is being looked at.
As far as basketball, they've talked of removing basketball sometimes. That's still something that is the general will of the board?
I certainly hope not. Those basketball courts are well-used, and we just recovered them. We spent the money on those basketball courts. In my opinion, they should stay. If anything, add another one. But that's me, and I have no idea what the board is interested in doing. But Dalhousett Thomas has brought up several plans from which we can then use.
That's good. And then while I found Miss Taggart's name on there, just put it aside, and I wondered, y'all got any feedback from the cycle program constituents of their pleas of the program, displeased with the program, or just something else?
Well, I would normally defer to either Alderman Beatty or Alderman Tischler. And right now, we are in the process, so we haven't finalized anything other than, in fact, I just talked to Alderman Beatty this morning, just a minute ago, about the hours, which will be during sanitation hours of seven to four, when sanitation is openly accepted in politics, obviously. And then the first Saturday of the month from nine to one, which offers an opportunity for weekend recycling. So we've got to get the fence built, and get the pads done, and second.
Thank you, Adolph.
Yes, sir. Alderman Tischler?
I'd just like to add a couple of things about the recycling. In addition to getting the mechanics of that space available, we're also working with Waste Pro, Jalen Gooden, Waste Pro, and some other folks about educational materials and getting some things out to the, to the public. So I still think it will be, just given the nature of how long it takes to get things done and how long it takes the weather to cooperate to allow us to get things done. It may be early February before we kick that program off again. But we're, we're moving forward as best we can. And I would like to say about the sports flex in McKee that this, this contractor wants to drill down on those designs. And so if people do have thoughts about what they'd like to see in those parks, to get in touch. Alderman, me, or Mr. Courtney, who's the director of parks, and give some feedback. These plans were done some years ago, and things do change. So we're updating and refining and seeing what we will be able to afford to do in those parks. But we certainly want to be responsive to what the community wants to see there.
Thank you. Alderman Little?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, Mayor. Thank you.
And Alderman Vaughn?
Oh, ma'am, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Under citizens' comments, you have an opportunity to come forward. You have three minutes, which has been timed by the city clerk, to give us your thoughts on any particular items concerning you that you would like to have the board know. So, Mr. Turner, always nice to see you.
Thank you, everyone. I'm Alderman Vaughn, seven. This mayor, this white mayor, Alderman Vaughn, two five key, forty key. And I'm in my BAC. Uh, I'm two, yes. Uh, what you call it, in bad, that be, had that captain. Uh, in old days, we'd be mid-season, or they were pretty in front of science war. But since the time that it didn't get no worse than this, but uh, they had fans, but uh, who said, don't. Uh, we thank Mayor Flue, where he's been here, and you need the high, and you have a really protective, and he got me. And hoping that for his family, only if you want to put snipers on these nails to keep people from falling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, I will close with your citizens' comments. We have three public hearings this evening. And the first one we'll start with is an annual court and public hearings for the SMART grant application presented by Jeremiah Dumis, head of parking and transit for Mississippi State University. Oh, okay. Was Jeremiah going to appear on, okay. If you would identify yourself.
Ronnie White, associate director, department and transit.
Yeah, thank you for that, Mr. White. Mr. Dumis, are you on the line?
I'm here.
Okay. Would you like to narrate your presentation?
I will. And Ronnie will drive it from right there.
Okay.
We ready?
Yeah.
I want to, excuse me. I want to thank you all for having us. This is our annual meeting. Sorry, I cannot be there with you in person. As part of our annual funding, we come to you each year with a required public hearing where we are, we present to you the prior year, we present to you the details of our funding. We are glad to take comments from you, the board and the mayor. And then we ask that you also open it up to those in the audience which would like to make comments. Needless to say, this past year has been an interesting year. Our funding details have stayed the same. So Ronnie, if you'll go to that first slide, all of these details have remained the same over our, over our several years of service. We are a 5311 rural mass transit program. These funds are administered by the Federal Transit Authority through the Mississippi Department of Transportation. These funds cover 80% of our administrative and capital cost, and then 50% of our operational cost. Those other percentages, that 20% and that 50%, obviously are covered through local funds that we'll talk about in a minute. We do operate fixed and flex routes. We do operate a system-wide pair transit program, which is on demand. And we do participate, as required, in regional and statewide coordination. So just to get to the nuts and bolts of this past year, it was interesting. Started out great, but when you look at what we did over the year in terms of ridership, we finished this last fiscal year down 42% in ridership on our fixed routes. We finished down 32% in pair transit. When you go to the next slide, it really tells the story of when this hit. We started the year with our fiscal year, the beginning of our fiscal year is October. We go through September 30th. October through February, we witnessed record ridership on all of our routes. The graph that you see in front of you is a comparison of months in 2020 to the prior year months. So you see January, for example, we were up last January compared to January of the prior year, 21,000 riders. We all know what happened in March, and you can see the story of what really happened. I've talked a lot with y'all about our ridership and how, obviously, we're student strong in terms of numbers with over 60% or 70% of our ridership being students. You see that impact beginning to hit us in March and April. Normalized a little bit when students are gone, and we were relying really on those city riders, May through July. But you can see an impact here when you look across the board, especially in October, where last October, we were down 100,000 riders as we were the prior October. This is something not unique to us. When you look across the board and transit agencies and our peer institutions and even non-university transit systems, it's not unique to hear them talk about a 75, 80% reduction in ridership due to COVID. And we believe we saw that through the year. I mentioned 45% in terms of annual year to year. But there's no doubt, when you look at these numbers from March through December, what that impact has been. It wasn't all bad for us. When you look at the accomplishments, we were able to do, you know, every year we look at how we, we can maximize efficiency and maximize ridership on all our routes. When March hit, we had to really look at how do we, we changed that model of maximizing riders? And how do we look at safety? And how do we look at continuing to operate in essential service as deemed by the federal government? And so we, we did reduce capacity on every one of our buses. We cut that capacity in half. We skipped every seat, marked off every seat. We purchased the best PPE we could. We gave it to every driver, and we actually had enough to where we distributed some to riders when we could and as we could. We had driver mandate, our mask mandates on all our buses and still do. Some vehicles where we know we carry COVID-positive patients, we are individuals on specific quarantine routes. We do have driver protection that have been implemented. We've implemented a daily, multiple times a day, electrostatic bus cleaning program. So we, we will stop buses on their routes and clean them a couple of times a day with electrostatic disinfectant machines. We were awarded, one of the big goals we asked last year, big ask in our numbers last year was financing, or not financing, but funding to build a, an operations facility. We were awarded those funds, and we've actually started construction this week on that transit facility on the south side of campus. But most importantly, we were able to continue to supply the essential services that we are tasked to provide to our community. When COVID hit in March, we shut down all of our campus routes, and we maintain those as being closed through August. Our city routes, we ran a skeleton crew on those through the summer, through, from March to August with a multiple, or oftentimes just one bus on those routes. And we continued to provide that service. And I was very thankful of that. And we only, you know, we only had one day throughout the whole pandemic where, and it was when I was actually out of town and things really were bubbling to the point of a bit of panic by everybody when things started shutting down, that we didn't provide the service. But it gave us a day to kind of catch our breath, see what the best options were, and we moved forward on that. So moving forward, when you look at what we are preparing to propose or are proposing for 2022, our funding is back to the normal ask that we typically do. Last year, this was elevated because of that capital facility. We're seeking a little over 4.5 million in funds. Two thousand, or 2 million of that will be in proposed local cost share. Majority of that coming from MSU and Parking and Transit Services. We do have some various contracts and advertisings that help offset some of that local cost share. And then the $50,000 that y'all provide annually is a part of that cost share mix as well. When you look at the, when you look at our routes, we are proposing no service changes, no stop changes, no shelter changes. We're continuing to just provide the service that we have in the past several years with no changes to hours of operation, days of operation, service schedules, times or stops. The two things that we really want to do, and I think in light of the past year, and when you look at, at agencies across the board, we really want to focus on our next goals as being maintaining the system that we have. When you look at the challenges we faced this past year, and you look at the opportunities that it's given us with working with our drivers and implementing all the challenges that we've, we've had to face and put those into action with riders and with drivers, the real challenge will be maintaining that, maintaining that system so it's, it's safe and reliable for all. Because we continue to hear from, from those in the community, and we continue to see the need for the community. And so we want to just continue to focus on those efforts so that we can continue to provide the service that has become reliable for so many in the community. That's basically it. I'll stop there. Ronnie, I don't know if you want to add anything. I do want to end, though, with, you know, we've all had challenges this year, and we've all had challenges with, or not challenges, but we've all seen so many people step up to the plate and provide services and go beyond in terms of essential workers. And I can't say enough for those that work with me and that I get the opportunity to work with on a daily basis that have really rolled up their sleeves and really hit this thing right on the head in terms of meeting the challenge, whether it be providing services. Oftentimes, we know that we're carrying people, and I mentioned this when I was with y'all in October. We know we're carrying people that are COVID-positive. We've got documented cases of that happening. We didn't do it intentionally, but we did it nonetheless. And, and our protocols worked, and we've not had one reported case of transmittal of COVID on our system, and we're proud of that. But I'm even more thankful that, you know, hell or high water, we've got people that show up every day to make sure that this system still works and provide the service that, that we know so many rely on. So I'm very thankful of that. So I'll end there. Ronnie, if you, I can hear a little bit, but Ronnie, if you would, just restate any questions that might be posed, and I'll be glad to answer.
Yes, sir.
All right. If you will, what I'll do is open it up for a public hearing, and then I'll allow the board members to make comments. So if that's okay. All right. First thing we'll do is we'll have a public hearing on, on the SMART bus and this grant application. Anyone wishing to speak about the SMART bus and the grant application now would be the opportunity. And this grant application, anyone wishing to speak about the Smart Bus and the grant application now would be the opportunity.
Seeing none, we are glad that we joined the Smart Bus March, Scottville. With the Black King and with the National Interstate trying to stabilize, maybe to get that to normal. A lot of people, it took a little time, but the guys used to try to keep those things. That thing they're claiming, I opened it back, both years ago, you know, back to normal. Smart for you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else wishing to speak in this public hearing as it relates to the Smart Bus system? All right, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and I will move to the board. Alderman Vaughn, anything you'd like to?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, mayor, thank you.
Alderman Beatty? Is it interlocal or number?
Yeah, that's interlocal agreement, I believe. I hadn't been in a while, fresh on it, but yeah.
I'm sure we can get Mr. Dumas to send us that, copy that interlocal.
I'm sorry, I wanted to.
Alderman Dumas, uh, sorry, Corbin Alderman Dumas, Jeremiah, would you send us a copy of that interlocal?
I will look and see there. You know, that's not something we do annually. To my knowledge, I'm not sure, Chris, you might be able to say, what, what would be the, from a, from a funding standpoint, we, we seek those funds annually through your outside contribution. Is there, yeah, is there, would there be anything specific that would go back to the creation of the system of, of why that interlocal would have been in place?
Yes, I think you remember an initial document when the system was started that was either interlocal or MOU-based. And you're right, Jeremiah, it hasn't been rolling annually, but it was a creation document. So I think if we get our hands on that, that will be the applicable document. I'll look on my end as well. I may have a copy of it, and, and we will come up with it between the two of us.
Okay.
Just an opportunity to revisit, since it's one of those things that has been a while ago, and, and so we'll just make sure we've got it in our files as well for our own education application.
For us to extend city funds, we'd have to have something, there would have to be an initially of, of, of interlocal agreement between MSU and City of Starkville.
That's right, but it, but it's also legal in that we're matching the grant funds, and so that can allow expenditure by municipality.
Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Little?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Sistrum? Alderman Carter? All right, well, I did get, I did get to say something, and I'm going to tell, tell everybody that I think that the smart system is extraordinarily beneficial to our community. I think it's an economic development tool. I know from a business standpoint, both in the partnership, it's talked about as a good tool for attracting businesses. I certainly know from my personal business that it has been a boon to have locations around the community that those pickups are available and that are convenient, and that take people to places that they need to go, which would be Wal-Mart and the hospital and downtown and, and the university. So I think it's an extraordinary thing, and I'm delighted that we partner with them both financially and with in-kind services. So I want to say, say congratulations to Alderman Dumas on his success with this and continued success. So I greatly appreciate y'all's work in making us a part of this program, so. All right, anything else we need to do to check the boxes for you guys? All right, thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Alderman Dumas, I hope you feel better.
Thank y'all.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, consideration of rezoning twenty-one dash oh one, a request to rezone four lots within the Cornerstone Industrial Park, Phase One subdivision from an S, from S one or SI to C with parcel numbers one oh four dash seventeen point oh oh one point oh eight, one oh four dash seventeen dash oh oh one point oh seven, one oh four dash seventeen dash oh oh one point oh six, and one oh four dash seventeen dash oh oh one point oh nine. Mr. Havilin?
Yes, RV twenty-one dash zero one. This is a request by the City of Starkville to correct the air in the official zoning map of the City of Starkville. Four lots in the Cornerstone Industrial Park, Phase One subdivision plot. This includes lots eighteen, twenty, twenty-three, and twenty-four. The request is to rezone the four lots from SI, which is special institutional, to C, which is commercial based on an air in the map and a need to correct the air. All lots within the subdivision were rezoned as special institutional since December of two thousand and nineteen with the adoption of Unified Development Code. The issue is that the SI zoning designation is kind of reserved for the City of Starkville-owned, managed, or partially-owned property. The four subject properties are not owned or managed by the city. Lots twenty-three and twenty-four are owned by other governmental agencies, the state and the federal, and not regulated by the city. Lots eighteen and twenty are privately owned and are currently restricted to primarily governmental uses unless rezoned. The zoning designation of C would provide for an appropriate number of uses and dimensional standards for future development. The request was notified in accordance with Section three point one point three G of Unified Development Code. Seventy property owners of records of the hundred and sixty feet of the subject property were notified directly by mail. A legal ad was published in the Starkville Daily News on December sixteenth, twenty twenty, and a sign was posted on each property in a conspicuous location. As of this date, the planning office has received one phone call and one person's visit requesting information about the request. In the opinion of the planning department, the proposed rezoning request would need one or more of the dimensions for it to do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Havilin. All right, since we are applicant, I think I was not asked for the applicant to come forward. But I do have an opportunity to open it as a public hearing, which I will do now, and then let the board comment later on. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this matter as a public hearing now would be the opportunity to come forward. Anyone? All right, I will close it as a public hearing. Any comments from the board? Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, mayor, thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
Mr. Havilin, thank you, ma'am. Why the city is not regulated, lots of them are specialist teachers in lieu of, I mean, now they come under, under as a.
We do, the special institutional, we've meant to design to kind of catch a lot of the city-owned property, like the parks, the schools, even like a lift station, stuff like that is all put in special institutional. And whenever we converted over from the place type map, which is in the conference of plan to the zoning map, we carried over the special designation for the place type they had and brought it over and mistakenly rezoned these four pieces of property that were not city-owned.
Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am, other than to say, I would like for, for this to be approved as, not as a rezoning, but as a Scribner's era that, that way, I, I believe that's what, what it is. It seems like a legitimate era that was just made erroneously, and that, that would be the, the path to move forward.
Okay, we have a, we have an eye contact here between Mr. Havilin and Mr. Latimer, and I, we've discussed the Scribner's era. I thought that's what it was too, but I think there's a reason that it said an RV, so Mr. Latimer?
Alderman Walker, the reason Mr. Havilin proposed it this way is when the UBC went into effect, this property was rezoned. So to rezone it again, I think the only choice we have is to follow under the mistake wrong in the rezoning law. It is a Scribner's era, but I don't think we can do it with a brush of the pen. I think we have to follow that process.
Yes, sir. So if I can follow up, so i- in terms of thinking about in that regard, you don't have to meet the conditions of changing conditions in the neighborhood and so forth?
That's right. You just follow, you, you fall under the mistake wrong of the rezoning rule, not the change and need wrong.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Alderman Little?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Sistrum?
Alderman Walker did a great job of elucidating the issues there for us, and, and Alderman, I'm sorry, Attorney Latimer, I appreciate your response.
Alderman Carter? All right, I close it, or we are now at a point where we have consideration. Do I have a motion? Motion from Alderman Sistrum to approve the consideration of RV twenty-one oh one, one second.
Second.
Second from Alderman Beatty. If you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carter?
Yea.
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 Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
All right, it is unanimous. Thank you so much, everyone. All right, the next item is, and the last public hearing is a public hearing to amend the City of Starkville Code of Ordinance, Chapter ten, Section ten dash thirty-six and ten forty, to allow for brew pub exceptions to food sale requirements and to define brew pubs. And this is our first public hearing. We will be having another one, which then will be the opportunity for the board to have a consideration of this change. But at this point, I will open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak about this matter now would be the time to do so. And if you would come forward, identify yourself, please, for the record.
Hey, ma'am, John Higgins, even board chief. If you remember, I spoke to you a few weeks ago. I own Spring Street Cigars, and I have a small presentation for you. Spring Street is founded in two thousand fourteen, very large cigar company located in headquarters in Tuba, Mississippi. We have stores in Tuba, Oxford, Louisville. We're opening our South End store in March of this year. I'll make sure I can get you an invite to the grand opening. And obviously, we hope to be able to open in two thousand twenty-one here in Starkville. We're looking at the old Mudshot Building downtown, of course, as our location. Given the size of the Mudshot Building, we want to utilize this tunnel space by putting a new brew pub. Our plan is to install a three and a half barrel beer brewing system. The equipment will be located on the first floor. Our intention is to make this somewhat arborum for you. If you've ever been in a brew pub, they're typically behind glass walls that you can see and see the operation of the equipment. As a state statute, we're not going to distribute beer anywhere else. We're not allowed by state. We have to consume all of our beer on the site. The pictures in the TV back there are a little better for you. This is kind of the way we envision it, kind of arborum. You walk in, you actually see this behind glass. And this is actually the equipment we're going to be buying. It's a three and a half barrel system. It's electric heating operated. It's a stand-borne system. There'd be no other need from outside to brew the equip- uh, brew the beer. It's going to be food-grade stainless steel designed. It's made in United States. And again, that's kind of our, our intention is, we don't have a kitchen within the Mudshot Building, so we're not, are able to provide the food requirement as it currently exists under the ordinance, so, thank you very much.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Anyone else wishing to speak under the public hearing? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Any comments from the board at this point in time before we move to the next item? Alderman Carter, any comments?
I haven't said a comment, as I said last time, economic development. While I'm very much in favor of anything that we violate the downtown specialty buildings that nature and that location. Brew pub, to my knowledge, and what we said, is that a, you know, I was always under the assumption that had certain certain alcohol sales, you know, that alcohol thing had a food fair, so complicated that, and I've, I've never seen that anywhere in the state of Mississippi. Brew pub a word that was in our state's law somewhere, or that's something that's a? Next class time beer is not being alcohol, that's an essential alcohol. So that was, kind of torn on this one, to be honest with you. I would, I would, I would never want to see the deal fall through and then the development not happen, but same time, I would still have comments to myself after the last meeting, just like, I say that, and, and these years, I would tell honestly, nobody wants to eat milk cigars at the same time, and I remember the days of smoking, and when you go in a restaurant here in Starkville, you couldn't, couldn't enjoy your meal from the cigarette smoke. And, and that was something that we've done as a board, that kind of jump ahead and set the curve and set the Mississippi, the smoking ordinance. But very, very interested in this development as far as an economic side, so I'll probably vote for, kind of lean in that way fifty-one percent, but unless something has changed between now and then, I just, I have, my only heartburn is, is not to allow food to the patrons. And the culinary thing that we already have downtown is robust, and so I would encourage that in the future if it works into your business model, something where I'd like also to understand, but I'm, I'm interested. I think it's going to be good for downtown. I do want, obviously, I think we'll probably get Oxford in the near future. Got to go there a couple times, but I kind of want to see what you've got. I've heard good things just talking to people I know in two of those towns and then looking on mine up, diagrams. I, I don't. It's the one market, if there were a market that, you know, probably don't want to be eating, and, and the two don't go well, don't go that well together. And that just comes from experience and thought from years ago, so that's all I've got. Thank you.
Alderman Sistrum?
A question for Mr. Latimer. Do you think with all the places in our ordinance, it's where we need to update definitions and make changes? You're comfortable with that?
I am, you know, we, well, I've put it this way, I am right now for the purposes of this public hearing. I may say something before now, and the second public hearing catches my eye. But we tried to address the smoking issue by adding an extra sentence to the brew pub definition in the packet that says brew pub does not mean restaurants or bars as defined by Starkville Smoking Ordinance. So what that says is that the smoking rule would still apply to restaurants and bars, and we wouldn't be opening the door to that. We'll give it another look before the second public hearing, but I think we tried to catch everything.
Thank you.
Alderman Little?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Walker?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I, I just have, again, a question for Attorney Latimer. I just want to make sure that, that I'm fully grasping the, the change in the ordinance. So what's in the packet where the definition of brew pub, other than that last sentence that you just read, is that the state of Mississippi's legal definition?
It is. So if you look in the packet, the first sentence is straight from the state statute, and that second sentence that starts with brew pub does not mean bars or restaurants, that's the sentence I added to draw a line between the brew pub and a bar and a restaurant.
Thank you. I have one more question related to that definition. It says in here that light wine, spirit, or beer is produced for consumption on the premises, although without prohib- prohibition on sales for all premises consumption. So does that mean, since this is going to be in the so-called go-cup district, does that alcohol have to be consumed in the rest- or not in the restaurant, in that entity, or will it be allowed to be able to leave like any place else if it's in a cup?
The state legislature added that clause in this past year, Alderman Walker, that although without prohibition on sales for off-premises consumption. What that means is exactly that, that somebody could buy beer at the brew pub and take it out as part of the leisure and recreation district and a go-cup.
Thank you. Last, last comment question I have is if there are other businesses located in the arts and leisure district that are currently under, listed as a restaurant and bar because they want to sell both beer and liquor, meaning that they have to still maintain the twenty-five percent food threshold, that's correct?
That's correct.
So if they were to want to change their designation to be a brew pub, it would require that they no longer have the alcohol license and can no longer sell liquor. Having said that, if they were to meet those conditions, they could be classified as a brew pub as long as they would fall under the conditions as outlined in this new ordinance?
That's correct, and, and by state statute, they would have to meet the brew pub definition, and also the production requirements, the permitting requirements, the licensee requirements. It's all in Title sixty-seven, Chapter three of the Mississippi Code. They've got to check all those factors as a brew pub if they wanted to convert their business.
So I'm, I'm, I'm leaning in favor of this. I think the real honest of this is going to be with city enforcement. Whether you're not relying on ABC, but somehow that through code enforcement, we're going to have to make sure of the, that the letter of the law is being met here, and I have all the confidence that we can do that. I do think that that needs to be clearly outlined for what it is that city staff is going to need to do that they currently aren't having to do in this type of environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. Alderman Beatty?
Second.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am, mayor, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
Ma'am, thank you very much, uh, Alderman Sistrum answered one of the questions I was concerned about, but I'll save my comments to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Carter, you had something you wanted to circle back on?
Yeah, I just forgot to mention, I had a petition, wondered about that same kind of question, I thought Alderman Walker's saying, you, they still have to provide by the enforcement of smoking right outside the door, I think it's 25 feet, so obviously they can't walk out, right, I oppose that question, um, they can't walk out with cigarettes there, that's directly, put it out, fire distance from the door, and then rely on walking down the road, correct?
I think, so the smoking ordinance that it stands now bans smoking in all public spaces, so that would include the sidewalk and the public roads, and if they went on the private territory or backyard, something like that, of course.
They couldn't stand at front entrance and Spring Streets and smoke cigars.
That'd be public sidewalk.
And outside patios, um.
The outside patio would be by all the premises of cigar lounge, just like thumb smoking is allowed on outdoor patios of restaurants.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, community development, consideration of landscape waiver 21-01, a request for the landscape waiver for buffer location and tree type requirements for townhome development on Landline in a T N N zone with parcel number 102I00, 00200. Mr. Havilin?
This is a request by Amy Corney on behalf of Dallas, Shaw, and LaVon in Richmond for two landscape waivers for proposed downwind development on the north side of Landline. The Aspen is proposing, uh, building 42 downwind unit, uh, development on the site, a special exception for the use of townhomes was approved by the board on May 5, 2020, and is part of the approval of 20 foot wide Type C landscape buffer along the northern property line of the wire. During the site plan review, a conflict between the landscape buffer and the north side of the property and utility easement was discovered. Section 14.12.3.3C of the Unified Development Code does not permit, uh, a utility easement to be used as part of a buffer. The Aspen is requesting a waiver to allow the use of utility easement beneath the buffer requirement, and the use of tree species that are smaller that do not qualify as a canopy tree required. The Aspen has worked to start the utilities on trees, species, and the tree location of the proposed plan. And you can see on the drawing right here on the top, that's the utility easement, the blank area, and then here is the small trees, they're located just outside of the easement, but the species that were selected will not get large enough to ever interfere the line or have a big enough spread to interfere the line. Then the actual landscape, uh, shrub requirement is still being accomplished in the easement on the northern side, right against what would be the fence to the residential area to the north. And the easement is approximately 30 feet wide right here, maybe a little bit wider because it's kind of a strip of property behind it over here, so if they weren't allowed to have this waiver, they would have a 30-foot easement that they couldn't do anything in, plus the 20 feet, before they could ever start any type of structure. And in the opinion of the planning department, the proposed landscape waiver request could meet the criteria of a landscape waiver review and approval, the proposed landscape plan with required fence should accomplish the intent of the buffer. Or any questions?
Correct. Um, the, the easement is a, is that a electrical easement?
Electrical easement, it's a, a overhead power, and whenever they started this process or a special exception, I think everybody kind of saw in the aerial, knew something was back there, but it was never mentioned like what type of line it was and how difficult it would be to deal with, and that came up as sort of a surprise during the site review.
And how's the electrical department going to access that easement?
Uh, they've worked with Jason Warner, and he's walked through, and he said he can get through there with the lanes separated, because they pretty much have the, the 15 feet in the center to be able to get their truck right down the middle through there.
Correct, and that's going to be tightly landscaped underneath it?
Underneath there are just the open lawn, and then the trees, which are these circles here on the bottom, would be on the south side, and on the top side, up against the residential fence, is, uh, more of a shrub area.
Oh, okay, so the easement is inside a fence?
You see the, the, the line with the T, that's the actual location of the line, and then the easement's here, and then all the way to the property line right there.
Okay, all right, well, that answered my question, because I was thinking about using an electrical easement for, one of the things I would love to see us do in the future is we can develop things, is to use easements as ways to have bike paths and walking trails and that sort of thing, but it's inside a fence, that one more foot, okay.
One other thing to add, in our code, when we wrote it, because of the conflict with utility easement supplies, if this were on the front of the property, here the right of way, then my staff would be allowed to accept the smaller trees to be used, but since we didn't anticipate any easement to be on the rear of the property, of distant property, it's not allowed in the code right now.
Okay, but we can tweak the code to?
Yeah, just allow it on all property lines rather than being specific for one side.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, Alderman, Alderman Vaughn, any questions, any thoughts?
No ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Hitt Beatty?
Um, mayor, I'm fine with it, 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 the developer's putting up the perimeter fence at the back, at the property line, um, it's supposed to play as a neighbor, that's a, that's a joint name, correct?
Uh, does it come that far, that deep? By the way, so.
What's the neighborhood?
I think so.
Same.
Is it really?
It's a neighborhood.
Does it come that deep? Okay.
Is there, okay, where there's been objections to that?
There, uh, we didn't hear anything from them on the special exception, that was required for a public notice, the landscape waiver does not have a public notice requirement, but there were, I don't think there was anybody from the neighborhood that's special exception to.
And honestly, I don't think that they were expecting trees to come in the power lines and grow up in this power.
There, there are no trees in the power line.
Not now, that's clear and clear.
This lot should be more trees planted in the power line, the ones that are along the fence road, that are, I think most of those are actually on their property, I don't believe those are going to be, but I haven't seen a tree from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Walker?
Uh, no, no comments other than to say, I think this is, uh, a plan that, that works, uh, dealing with the constraint that you have with a utility easement being there, so no, no other comments from me.
Thank you. Alderman Little?
No ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Sistrum?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Carter?
No comment.
All right, thank you, um, we have a, does I need a motion for this particular agenda item?
I'm not going to talk to you about the motion.
I have a motion for approval, Alderman Beatty, do I have a second, sir? Second from Alderman Vaughn, if you would please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carter?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Yea. It is unanimous, thank you, everyone, and last on our agenda, but not least, is the claim socket, do I have a motion?
Approval.
Alderman Sistrum, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Beatty, if you would please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carter?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum?
Yea.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
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 Yea. All right, vote of five, motion carries, and if you, that takes us to the end of our agenda, very quickly, there's a work session, there'll be a work session. Okay, make it. Start with City Hall, located in 110 West Main Street on the second floor, or, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
No problem.
Motion to adjourn? I have a second, sir, excuse me, a second, and, and, yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name?
Alderman Carter?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum?
Yea.
Alderman Little?
Yea.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Yea. It is unanimous, we all, thank you, everyone, y'all have a great day.